Okay, any public input?
No public.
Any correspondence? Do we have any correspondence?
No.
All right, I guess we have to have voting of officers for this coming year. So I put it up for the three of us. Um, I, uh, so you know, far as chairman goes, I would run again for chairman. If anyone wants to.
I'll second that.
Well, you should probably make the motion.
Yeah, you should make a motion.
That's right.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, um, if my chairman, we got a, I think, Val Buwer last year, did you want to do that again this year?
I'll do it almost.
Okay.
Okay.
Second it?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, I guess that's about it, right? We need those two officers or do we need a secondary?
We don't, we don't do that.
We don't do that, so, okay.
Trying to take Mary's job from her.
Yeah, we can do that.
That's mine.
Mary, yeah, do you want us to take that over?
I am doing it.
Yeah. Um, okay, approval of a meeting from November twentieth.
Similar.
Everyone read that? Okay, any changes? Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve? Uh, second? All in favor?
Aye.
All righty, uh, next in, we got the performance reviews, uh, Mike, uh?
Yep, I'm gonna start with the OCIO and then.
Then go into that, yep.
So, um, I'm here today with Raj and Kevin from the OCIO office, OCIO outsourced, outsourced chief investment officer. Um, I hope after our presentation, you agree that this is a logical path forward. Um, why have we not used it in the past at Morgan Stanley, the minimum size was fifty million dollars on OCIO? Um, the two plans together are over fifty million, so I got the firm go ahead and prove, to approve, uh, at this plan.
And what are we, about fifty-two million now, I think?
Forty-two in one, twenty or so in the other.
Twenty-one in the other, I think, forty-two, sixty-one, sixty-two.
It's funny, uh, I remember in two thousand and two, the lease plan was two million.
Right.
And the town plan was six.
Changes.
Boy, and what, what, what happened?
And I was here then, too.
You were here, you've been, you've been the rock, and you've been the rock, and there's been, you know, six or seven selectmen, three comptrollers, and, you know, other than the rock here, the turnover has been, you know, it's, it's just, it is what it is, right? And when you have, you know, I think we did a good, good move moving it to the one o'clock, it's the seven-thirty, we were just dying on the by, we couldn't get anyone to join the committee. Um, so we're not going to go through page by page of the presentation, but I, but I want, I, I'm gonna start talking about OCIO and why I think it makes so much sense. I'm gonna hand it off to Raj, and then we're gonna talk to Kevin. Kevin, by the way, is head of government entity within the OCI group. Uh, that group at OCIO at Morgan Stanley, over a hundred and seven billion assets under management. Uh, sixty-seven billion of that is in pension plans, just like the town of Bethel. So this is, this is something that, uh, my firm does all day, every day, uh, and we're really good at it. So why do I think OCIO makes sense to add it to the town of Bethel plans? Um, it, it's known, it's called fiduciary three thirty-eight, right? Where you're outsourcing, right, there's fiduciary, throwing some fancy words at you, but fiduciary three twenty-one, where Morgan Stanley is the fiduciary of the, of the menu, of the funds, of the accounts. Fiduciary three thirty-eight is that next level. We use it, uh, we do a lot of defined contribution plans. I was talking to Myra before the meeting. All of our plans over twenty-five million are in this three thirty-eight relationship where the investment committee, the HR, comptroller, owner, i- i- is, is outsourcing all the fiduciary liability. Um, always gonna be a fiduciary, right? There's no escaping that. You control contributions and we're all contributions, uh. But really, to, to outsource the fiduciary liability is a tremendous benefit, uh, to you guys as committee members, to Brad as comptroller.
I can interject, Barry Corina and I many, many years ago interviewed you, if you remember.
Yep.
Uh, to VR, um, and then we got it approved.
Yep.
So you've been here all that time.
Yep, yep. So.
But he hasn't had the same degree of fiduciary liability.
No, no, this is different. No, this has evolved.
Right.
So, so what, so what happens, right? Nothing, except for Morgan Stanley and the OCIO team joined my team. Right, so that, so it's not some big dramatic change, we're not changing platforms. It's bringing me closer to the intellectual horsepower of the firm. And, uh, in fact, Kevin is gonna be one of the portfolio managers with me. There's gonna be, uh, four additional portfolio managers. So we're gonna, all gonna work together as a team, assuming you guys agree, agree and proceed. Glenn in my office, so we do a lot of Monday through Friday busywork with the actuary, with Millamette, with the directed trustee. Uh, we also have five operation professionals that will help us in pushing around and doing all the administrative work that goes on in between, uh, these meetings. So, um, re- really, I've sort of looked at this as a, as a win-win-win. Further?
Yeah, so I was just gonna say, if you can outline sort of clearly what changes and what doesn't change between the OCIO arrangement and the arrangement that we have had with you.
Yeah, so we'll get into that for sure. I'm, I'm, yes, 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 no, we're totally gonna get into that.
Sorry.
It's okay. Um, and, and really, with the amount of government plans that the OCI group has, we're always gonna be doing best practices. Right, so as, as the, the environment and the backdrop changes, we're always gonna be on the, on the front edge of, of what a best, a public pension plan, tax dollars, uh, following the, the best practice that should be done. Uh, including, we're gonna get an updated new twenty-twenty-five vintage investment policy statement. The investment policy statement that we have is twenty-five years old. And that investment policy statement has been gutted. Uh, we had hedge fund guys on this committee, add to track, we had executives at TiaCref, add subtract, and this is kind of where we ended up. Nothing wrong with our investment policy statement. I mean, it's kind of hard to go wrong, as long as you have one that, that's updated. We have Dan, uh, we have the selectmen sign it each and every year. Um, but, you know, here's an opportunity to sort of start fresh a- and have, you know, what a, but a, okay, I keep using the word vintage, a vintage two thousand twenty-five investment policy statement. Um, we'll get into the creation of that investment policy statement, because, but, let me remind you, this is your investment policy statement, right? It's not ours. Um, we, we're gonna talk about alternative investments and, you know, this really brings us exclusive access to some investment, alternative investments that aren't necessarily available to the retail client because of the volume and the amount of assets the OCIO, uh, controls. And we're gonna get into those details, uh, later. Uh, ready for this one? A reduction in fees, uh, eleven basis points. We're gonna go from six, everything being static, we drop eleven basis points.
Point six-six now or something.
Point six-nine, it's gonna go to point five-eight.
Okay.
Just by going OCIO.
Point three-sixty is the same or whatever.
What?
No, there's two parts to it.
So that it's all in the point six-nine, now going to point five-eight.
Right.
Yep, 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 yep. Or a reduction in fees.
And that's the Morgan Stanley fees piece of that.
We're gonna get to, we're gonna break that out at the end, yep, yep, yep. Yeah, and, and that's gonna be fluid, guys, because managers have different expenses, right? So it's particularly with alternative investments, Myra knows, I mean, uh, why alternative investments? Alternative investments, you look at whether it be, you know, our secular, Morgan Stanley's secular or strategic expected rate of returns of the asset classes, Vanguard's, Merrill Lynch's, across the board, the highest long-term expected rate of return are alternative investments, private investments. Long, short, uh, hedge funds, private credit, private equity, um, infrastructure, real estate, you know, um, it, it's really a, and you, you're, the plan size can definitely accommodate it. You know, we do have two plans, right? And one is young and healthy, vibrant, alive, adding new members, healthy funded ratio. The other, different story, getting towards the end, retirees paying out more than is going in. And so, you know, we'll have, uh, some additional eyeballs to kind of change the asset allocation in the two plans. It'll accommodate, yeah. Um, and, and lastly, why, you know, of, of the seven reasons why I think this is a, a, a real no-brainer for the town of Bethel is that, you know, the bottom line, Kevin and Myra were talking about it, is just the increase in the active management, right? So the, it, it, we, we meet four times a year. There's a lot that happens in between, uh, quarters and coming here, you know, uh, underperforming manager showing you other alternatives we vote. It's just a much more proactive, um, you know, hands-on-the-stirring-wheel way to manage sixty million dollars in assets, right? Um, I just covered, presenting with these guys in the past, we're not page flippers, so that was section one, which was the firm, and I'm gonna hand it to Raj now. It's Raj represents, just so you know who we are, Raj represents OCIO and represents OCIO at Morgan Stanley, where Kevin i- i- is, is an actual government entity, and he's also huge in the Taft-Hartley space. Um, and he's head of government entity plans within the OCI group. So, uh, Raj is gonna, you know, briefly, uh, talk about OCIO and how it works.
Great, thank you, Mike. Good afternoon, everyone, both here in the room and on Zoom. Um, it's a pleasure to be here with you all today. And, uh, yes, so I'm Raj Dollywell, and I sit on the business development team for Morgan Stanley's outsourced chief investment office, or OCIO team. And, uh, Myra, this may be a little repetitive for you, given you ran an OCIO, but for those of you who are a little bit less familiar, um, an OCIO is essentially an out-of-house investment team that will serve as an extension of your board, and we assume day-to-day responsibilities for the management of the investment portfolio. So our group partners with advisors like Mike when their clients, um, are seeking a full discretion or OCIO-type relationship with Morgan Stanley. So I know Mike has been instrumental in, um, guiding the town and its investment decisions over the last few decades. And I do want to emphasize that he will remain your primary point of contact, so that will not change. Um, our role is really to augment the support he provides, um, by implementing a full discretion investment management framework, which is typical of an OCIO. So while the face you trust remains the same, in the background, we'll be working together very diligently to manage the investments, provide an additional layer of oversight, and to give the town, um, a deep bench of resources and personnel. So this will be in the form of a portfolio management team, which will be led by Kevin, um, and operations team, as well as a, uh, reporting team. And so, um, with the OCIO relationship, um, excuse me, um, with the OCIO relationship, um, uh, the, it's set up to really complement services that you're already receiving from Mike. And so what I mean by that is, um, you know, strategic guidance and planning, asset allocation, manager selection, um, risk management, and obviously, um, responding to the markets in a very proactive manner when there are opportunities or challenges as well. And, um, in, and, and you've asked, Myra, what really changes with the OCIO relationship? So, um, our team gets full discretion, and that allows us to time the markets a little bit more efficiently. So rather than, um, waiting for the next committee meeting and to vote on a suggestion or some advice, um, we can make those, uh, decisions right away, and then hopefully, um, help the portfolio a little bit more. Um, so at Morgan Stanley, our team is specialized by, uh, client segment or client type, and so we have three broad, uh, teams. We have a team that is catering to, um, nonprofit organizations. We have another team that focuses on ultra-high net worth individuals. And then last but not least, um, team in the room with you here today is our team that's catering to retirement plans. And so as Mike mentioned, um, Kevin does lead our Taft-Hartley and Government Entities team, and, um, he has over thirty years of experience, um, managing public pension plans, as well as multi-employer pension plans. And also, as Mike mentioned, uh, the retirement plans actually happens to be a little bit of an area of expertise for our OCIO group. It makes up sixty-two percent of our assets under management, which are currently at about a hundred and seven billion. And, um, OCIOs are continuing to, um, grow in size all across the country. Um, at, as of right now, across the US, there's about three and a half trillion in assets managed by OCIOs. And according to Suruly Associates, which is a, a Boston-based research firm, that number is expected to grow to about five trillion by, um, twenty-thirty. And so similarly, um, our OCIO is continuing to grow in size as well. And so in Suruly Associates' most recent, um, uh, rankings report, we were ranked the fourth-largest OCIO provider. And so, uh, the retirement space happens to be a continued area of growth for us. And so, um, the firm is really committed to investing in the technology and personnel that support this business. And so I'm really more than happy to answer any questions or really dive into whatever you guys, uh, wanna discuss in a little bit more detail, whether that's some benefits, um, of using this model. Um, and before handing over to Kevin, I'll pause here to see if there are any questions.
So in terms of, of size, I mean, with our total of about sixty million, we're relatively small, I would imagine, as one of your OCIO clients. Can you give us a sense of the size range, particularly Kevin, I guess you're.
Yeah, so, so the Taft-Hartley, uh, you know, multi-employer plans tend to be the larger plans, right? The, the, in the public space, uh, you, you, the sixty million dollars fits in, you know, right within the space. I think our largest, um, municipal plan is roughly, uh, three hundred and thirtieth million dollars, uh, and we have plans that go down to slightly below that fifty million dollars. Um, so, um, it fits right within the realm of money.
So we're not a peewee?
You know, no, not, not within the public space, not, not at all. Um, you know, as, you know, uh, you know, mentioning, like, the public space is one where some of those OCIO providers have actually been moving away from the space. Some of the large providers like Mercer, uh, have gotten out of that business. Morgan Stanley has embraced that business. We've put in additional resources into that. It's one of the spaces where, uh, we, um, you know, take extra steps to, you know, particularly in the public space. So like, well, you know, one of the most important things, and I'm gonna cut off here, but i- is the investment policy statement, right? Was Mike and Raj were mentioning, as you, uh, you know, turn over discretion to us to make these investment decisions on your behalf, right? Should we increase equity? Should we reduce equity? Increase fix? Should we make, buy this alternative investment, hire or fire a manager, right? We wanna do that, we, you know, and there are different bands of parameters that you can put on us on how much discretion and how much leeway you want us to invest, right? So crafting that investment policy statement that, you know, as Mike mentioned, is a little, you know, old and could use a refresh, uh, is something that we put a, a lot of effort into to determine those levels of discretion, right? But then, and we actually send it out to outside counsel, uh, who's, you know, not affiliated with Morgan Stanley, just to make sure that we're compliant with any government regulations within the particular municipality we're measuring, uh, sorry, managing the money. So that's like an extra step that we take just to make sure that we're compliant with all the local and, and state and regulations that, you know, applicable to any plan.
Just like in the past, there's daily monitoring by Clearwater Analytics of daily monitoring of the investment policy statement.
Right, so, so as Mike's mentioning, we hire the Clearwater, which is a third-party, uh, uh, service, where we'll put in all the parameters for the IPS, and then on a daily basis, we'll manage, you know, we'll monitor to say that if we have a minimum and a maximum for a certain asset class, that we stay within those parameters. If we fall out of that range, I'll get a notification that day that we're out of range, and we'll correct the, uh, situation if the markets move in such a way that something like that were to happen.
And like the outside counsel that looks at it, that's all inclusive to the fees, right?
That's included in your fee, yes, there's no additional charges for that.
I figured as much, but it's kind of silly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But look, no, but it's good questions, because like, I, I've seen, you know, like where a consultant will actually send like a bill for their travel expenses to attend to meetings and, and stuff like that, like, that's not at Morgan Stanley. The advisory fee that you pay is the advisory fee that you pay. Um, and when you were discussing before the investment management fees, as Mike was mentioning, they are a little bit fluid, right? So that, you know, if we decide to increase, say, like, exposure to alternative investments, the fees may be a little bit higher. So that portion of the account, you know, fee could go up or down, but your advisory fee remains the same.
All right. Um.
Yeah, I understand that some of it is variable, but I just don't wanna then suddenly get ten thousand dollar bill from the lawyer that we need to call.
No, and, 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 you know, any additional reporting or anything that, that Mike had provided to you or analysis on the asset allocation that we can provide to you, like, there's no additional charges.
That it falls within the parameter of the package.
Correct. Yes.
Is there anything that falls outside the package? That's a good.
Like when you say outside.
Well, outside of what we would be paying, the points, uh, it's going to pug five, what?
No, so at the, in the back is the fee section, and there's no variation, the fee's the fee. I mean, I would say that the probability of it going lower as total plant assets go higher. Uh, but that's probably not gonna happen, right? Because the employee plan, because that, you know, in the last five years, the employee plan has paid out four million more than came in. So, um, you know, the asset size is, is probably a peak now or close to it.
Yeah, probably not gonna grow.
Well, we expect you to grow it.
Yeah. But there's, there's a hole in the bucket.
Well, if we go by the actuarial percentages, we'll stay fairly level, except for the WOFR.
Right, but, but those are important considerations, right? When you determine asset allocation in a plan, right? And liquidity needs of the plan, right? Plans that are taking in assets every year can, you know, maybe afford to make commitments to some lesser liquid investments like private equity or private credit like that, whereas in, in a plan that is drawing down assets and in negative cash flow, we need to be more watchful and mindful of that and, you know, keep a, you know, a lower percentage if we use any of them at all.
And, and force a town contribution each year.
Exactly.
And knock, and knock on wood, we get over a hundred and five percent funded, right? I mean, and is there, is there sort of techniques and financial ways to get this off the back of the town? And, and those are things that we can explore. Um, before the OCIO wrote, I, I outsourced that. I bring in, we, C G Terminal Funding, if you ever heard of those guys, um, with high school, the guy started that company. And, and so we're, you know, sort of the goal here is once, i- i- is to get rid of the plan, right? Once it's, once it's at, at that mature, uh, stage, and we now have the, sort of the, the back office, uh, nerds, excuse the word, to, to be able to assist in making that happen.
Yeah, but that's what reaches a certain, that's only once it's down to a certain size, which could be decades from now.
We shall see, right?
It really, it really depends on the funded level, right? At, at the end of the day, right? If the plan gets over a hundred and roughly five percent funded, somewhere in that range, then you can consider things like pension risk transfers.
Right.
So I know we're jumping around a little bit, but right now, we have an outside custodian. Our, our assets are custodied.
Morgan Stanley.
Morgan Stanley.
They are at Morgan Stanley. So does this thirty-six basis points include custody?
Yes, yes.
Of all the assets?
Yes.
No, everything.
Mm-hmm. That's what I think.
And the town site ended twenty-twenty-four at eighty-nine percent funded, so we're not that far off.
Yeah, that's good news, we've come up.
Yeah. Well, you've had a, a good couple of years in the markets, right? Your, your expected return is at six and a half, I believe, on these numbers.
Yeah.
Six, that, I think. Well, yeah, and then you, you, since Bob and Brad have come in, they, the, the fun, the actual funding has been done, which in the past, that wasn't always the case.
Right.
Which is ironic that beauty plans are kind of, now they can make it or not make it, but, you know, the guy who owns the company down the street has a gun to his head.
Great, I'm happy to pass on to having.
Yeah, any other questions, Myra, or if you're sure?
Um, I guess one of the things, I don't know whether, um, I mean, I know, Mike, you've been working off a group of investment managers to recommend to us that come from the approved list within the company. Does the OCIO group have its own separate approved list and does?
So they have access to some, but no, it's, I mean, these guys sort of represent the global investment committee, the GIC.
Right.
And that's, the funds are off of that, off of their research.
So that, so, so the investment managers that you've been helping us to invest with are.
They're in there.
They're on that list.
Yeah.
But you guys presumably are gonna give a fresh look to the current.
Exactly, right? So, so Morgan Stanley has a global investment manager analysis group. There's roughly sixty-five analysts who sit on our floor up in Burches where I am. Um, they do everything, uh, sorry.
They're in Burches.
Yeah, that's headquarters.
At the, um.
Two, the, the headquarters, uh, two thousand Westchester Avenue.
Oh, okay. High store.
Yeah, um, and so the sixty-five analysts there, um, they do traditional, uh, research on traditional, uh, investments. They also have an extensive alternatives team. They have an operational due diligence team where they do, do a lot of things like kick the tires on some of the smaller and newer managers, right? To make sure that their systems are locked down, that they can't be hacked, that, that, you know, they can't, they can't thumb drive.
Track access.
Access points data, right? So they, they go and actually visit, you know, managers, they do extensive research on the manual site visits to those managers. So those are the same managers that, that, that Mike has been using in, in your book. Now, and this is extensive list that we covered, Morgan Stanley has a broad platform and a lot of analysts on this. But additionally, we have a, a, you know, team of, uh, investment professionals on our side who do, uh, additional work with manager calls. Uh, we have, uh, Brandon Dees runs the investment management group, and we have, uh, specialists in the private side of the market, we have specialists in hedge fund side, and then they have a specialist, Sukhu Saman, who does the traditional investments in equities and, and, and fixed income. Uh, so we have your regular calls with managers, so we have narrowed down their list to managers that we have more confidence in, that we utilize across our book. Uh, but then additionally, as Mike was mentioning, uh, you know, particularly on the alternative side, and, you know, in page four, there's some more, you know, information, uh, section four of this, uh, presentation, there's some more information about alternatives. Uh, and maybe it's a good time to, you know, switch over there. So if I could, you know, point you to, I think it's section one of your.
Page twenty-four.
Page twenty-four is what I'm looking at, right? And what I, what I'm gonna get at here is, if you look at the left-hand side of the page, you can see the activities in the fixed income, right? The, the variation of returns between a good manager and, 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 and a poor performing manager, isn't that great at the end of the day? When you're choosing active managers? When you look at the alternative investment classes, if you pick the winners, you, you, you're doing really well. If you pick the wrong manager, you, you, you know, you, you're not doing so well.
Assuming by the fees for people that manage that are higher?
No, alternative investments are just more expensive to run. And so like, ju- just as an asset category, Brad, they, they're just, they're, they're just more expensive.
All right, yeah. They're much liquid too, right?
I'm sorry?
As a.
They're less liquid, right? And they have, you know, some have like quarterly liquidity, some like a private equity, you need investment, maybe a ten-year investment that you make. Um, so it, it does vary depending on, and there's some that have the other liquidity too, so.
Yeah, but usually you wanna put those in a section where you're not gonna need that money.
Correct, right, and that goes back to the question about the liquidity. One of your plans is more active, is taking in cash, right? Another one is paying out. So we'll consider those things when we're making the investment. So, you know, it's possible that your manager lineup may not look the same between the two plans because of reasons like that, right? So.
And then what percentage you would want? Five percent, ten percent?
Exactly, right, right. So it's not only, it, it's the amount of, uh, the commitment to alternative investments, it's the types of alternatives.
And the percentage.
With the percentage, yes. Exactly, so those are all the things we'll look at. So, you know, the main point of this slide, right, is just the variability in returns across the alternatives is much greater, right? So the due diligence that we do on the alternatives class is extensive so that we can kind of identify the top performing managers and get managers in the top, you know, first and second quartiles, rather than picking ones in the third and fourth quarter.
And the other thing is they don't necessarily go with the Dow averages.
That's correct.
They can go counter them.
Right, right, so there are different types of investments, right? Whether, whether it's a, a macro-type investment, whether it's an equity long-short manager, whether it's a private credit manager, right? So it's an additional source of diversification that's different from the traditional market, you know, from the traditional equities and fixed markets that you have, right? You know, like recently, we've seen dominance of the S and P five hundred, right? It's been US private, US equities, public equities that have, you know, outperformed the last two years.
And particularly the technology.
The technology, the magnificent seven names, yeah, that you mentioned, uh, have been. The technology, the magnificent seven names, yeah, that you mentioned, uh, have been leading, and that market has been very concentrated, and managers that have uh, like public equity managers that have owned those names have done really well, and the ones that are underweight them have not done so well, right? But, you know, if we start seeing, you know, we're starting to expect to see the earnings growth of the magnificent seven start to slow a little bit, right? From the thirty eight, forty percent that you've seen down into the more in the eighteen twenties percent range, we're starting to expect to see the earnings growth of the remaining four hundred ninety three companies start to pick up a little bit, uh, is our expectations, you know, and you know, seven, eight percent in in this coming year. So they're starting to converge a little bit. And, you know, it may be a a time that's ripe for active management to start adding some value rather than just being con- so concentrated in those top names. So an investment like an equity long short manager has the ability maybe to, you know, add some value to like your traditional active manager can only add that value by going long, uh, uh, manager or right overweighted or underweight versus a benchmarkers, a short one has that extra tool that is told.
And and just to make a point, you know, my team, we've done a significant amount of alts in the last ten years. Morgan Stanley's done a brilliant job of, I mean, we we have alternative investments that minimums twenty, twenty five thousand, and twelve years ago, I mean, that was unheard of. But when I was, I mean, I have the alternative investment specialist designation, it's one of my many designations at the firm. I remember taking the exam, and your whole life you were taught that past performance has nothing to do with future performance. Opposite in alternative investments, past performance has a lot to do with. I remember, I remember getting to that question, it was like I I had to change my whole brain to answer correctly.
So so apropos of that, in terms of accessing the alternatives, most of these two questions, one, many of the very best managers are capacity constrained, so to the degree that you have access to them, how do you allocate that access among your OCIO clients?
So it depends on the 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 the, um, type of alternative management. So there there are a broad, uh, uh, platform, alternative investments, right? That will come across the whole Morgan Stanley chat, right? OCIO would allocate those just as they would like a uh any other client, uh, uh, in 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 we do not allocate just to our biggest or, uh, you know, preferred clients, right? You know, all of us have uh, uh, ability to put in for investments where we think they make sense for the client. If there is some kind of capacity strength, the the firm would have an allocation procedure and everyone would be cut back proportionally. Um, there are other managers that are exclusively available to OCIO that are, you know, that whereas a manager may approach Morgan Stanley, like, and one of the things I'm missing a little bit here is just the size of Morgan Stanley's platform, right? Morgan Stanley has the largest alternative investment platform on the street. Uh, we have over two hundred billion and, uh, uh, client assets in alternatives, we've been doing this for forty five years. Um, but what we're seeing now is there are certain smaller managers who may have limited capacity availability, right? And they want to come into Morgan Stanley, but they don't want to put it available to the whole platform, because they don't want to get, you know, thousands of dollars worth of orders. They only have fifty million dollars in capacity, so that may come just exclusively to OCIO. And there we can, you know, allocate that to the OCIO clients where it fits into their, uh, you know, IPS and where it makes sense for them to invest.
But you have an allocation procedure that ensures that the clients for whom that's an appropriate investment are treated equitably.
A hundred percent, yes.
We want to make sure that's.
And these things don't necessarily Google the market, sometimes separately.
Yeah, they 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 quite often, depending on, you know, which investment, right? Like a commodity, like like a CTA, like a managed futures type of investment, you know, it will move very differently from the markets, yes.
Do you put those investments, so a lot of those investors don't want twenty five thousand or a hundred thousand dollars from a client, and they're doing business with Morgan Stanley because you can do business in bulk? Are you commingling those, our investments with those of others when into some of these alternatives? Or how does, how does that work? Do we have a direct, I guess, okay, let's just take a a private equity limited partnership. Do we have a direct investment into that limited partnership? Or are we in a Morgan Stanley umbrella fund that is investing all their, all the group of clients that they want to invest in that?
So Morgan Stanley has two different platforms, right? We have the ability to to invest directly where clients meet the minimum sizes for those particular investments, in which case if the, i- if, you know, you know, the plans meet the minimum size and we have the ability to make that, you would own the the investment to work. We do also have a platform where they pull, uh, client assets into a a a a larger fund. Right? And that makes it accessible at at smaller dollar amounts to invest that are typically below that manager's.
And that fund would be diversified among managers, or you create this pool just for a, it, an individual manager?
So it would be, we would create that pool just for a specific manager. Um, but, you know, there are alternative like fund the funds managers that we could invest in as well, right?
But that's not, but typically, if you wanted to invest in, um, I don't know, Brad, hedge fund. You're running hedge fund, no. But but he needed, um, I don't know, he needed twenty million dollars and only five million dollars of ours was really available for investment. You would put us together with other similar clients and make that twenty million dollar investment in Brad's hedge fund.
Correct, right, there's certainly, so not every fund has the ability to have like smaller clients invested, but we we do have a a program where they, you you know, when Morgan Stanley will make one larger investment, other clients invest in that.
Yeah, you're making the investment, but you got your clients. And that's how.
So that's like, i- it's structured as a different vehicle, right? There's a different partnership, right?
We don't like to use the term feeder funds anymore, but but effectively, that's.
Yes.
But you're doing that.
Yes.
So you're you're, you're the one that's consolidating it, putting it in there, and we are uh, in the pool, so to speak.
Right, and and we may use a firm like I Capital or something to administer that, you know, fund them a half from Morgan Stanley, yes. Um, yeah, so it's one of the differentiators, Morgan Stanley, I mean, you can see on page twenty six, some of the different names that come through the platforms of you know, well-known names throughout, uh, the alternative space, um, you know, and the exclusive, you know, manager that we've been bringing out, um, you know, that's a relatively new offering that we've had and we've gotten some access to some really, you know, interesting managers through that, uh, platform. Uh, and it really is just a limited capacity and, you know, that they don't really want to get involved with multiple clients, of course, Morgan Stanley's book, they would rather like limit their focus to just a couple of clients from the CIO, so it works well for the managers that have limited capacity and they they like it and it works well by giving us some additional, you know, broader opportunities set to invest our clients' money.
Yeah, I'm looking at all the names here, you've got a bulk of them.
Right, exactly. And you know, and if we decide like at a certain point that like, you know, alternative investments make sense, right? Works, stuff like that into your investment policy statement, right? The permissible amounts, you know, whether, you know, there's a limit on the the uh liquidity amount that's in illiquid, like fully illiquid, semi illiquid, we can you know, have further discussions about that, you know.
So you would make a recommendation to us and we would be in a position where we would be approving or?
Correct. Well, the investment policy statement, as Mike mentioned, and Raj mentioned, is your investment policy statement, right? We will help you craft it. We can work on analysis that would say like, if we come up with this proposed asset allocation, here's what the forecasted return is based on Morgan Stanley's capital market assumptions. Uh, and we could show you studies like that and, uh, and then we can decide, you know, collectively, you know, where you think, you know, the best level of, uh, 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 risk and reward is, um, you know, potential and, you know, then grant, codify that in this investment policy statement.
Yeah, our our current investment policy statement, as Mike said, we're gonna have to do some revisions of it and updating and restructuring.
We we definitely.
And right now it doesn't.
So you guys could start us out with sort of a model statement.
Yeah, this has to be updated and rejected, right?
And at the beginning, look, I would suggest just, you know, you you know, you know, keeping similar with the, like, like, we can, you know, the investment, full investment policy statement discovery process, understanding your comfort uh, with alternatives and stuff may take some time, right? So we could operate within the parameters of your existing policy statement, your minimums and maximums uh, with the signing of an OCIO contract, if something like that were appealing and you wanted to move forward with it sooner, so I wouldn't want to.
But the existing IPS doesn't allow alternatives.
That's right, so we can just stick with the traditional investments, right? But what if you're making a manager change? Or, you know, changing the percentages between equity and fixed as the markets move.
Kevin and I were talking before the meeting of having a special meeting for the purpose of designing the IPS, so we're not waiting three months.
Right, well, I think that's appropriate.
Maybe have a subcommittee or however you guys want to handle it, you know.
So maybe perhaps like us making a a couple of, you know, allocation studies uh, to show you like, here's your current allocation, here's a a different allocation, you know, with equities and fix, here's one with some alts. And and then we can look at the, you you know, the different, uh, you know, things, compare them and um, you know, from there, you know, come up with the investment policy.
The other thing that I think we have to keep in mind, um, if we do start, um, making some alternative investments, which I generally would be in favor of, but, um, if for some reason we were ever to decide to terminate the relationship with Morgan Stanley, that then becomes more complex, because some of these investments will not have liquidity and, um, and may have very long tails.
Been a good twenty four years, man.
Well, I know, I'm saying, I just think, I just think from a fiduciary.
Yeah, 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 I I hear it.
We should be aware that you can exit an asset management relationship. I mean, suppose more, God forbid, Morgan Stanley goes on the ropes. I mean, I don't think that's gonna happen, but you know what I'm saying, the rare. Um, I mean, when you enter into an OCIO agreement, you want to do it in a spirit of partnership, and we've had a long partnership with Morgan Stanley, but we also um, also have to understand that under some circumstances, we might need to end that because we're fiduciaries, and if we need to end it and we are in alternative investments, particularly ones that are in commingled vehicles of any kind with, um, it becomes just messier.
My question would be if we want it out of the OCIO, not if we want it out of Morgan Stanley. It's smart to know, like, where the exits are. Where the exits are, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, and and.
Which is appropriate to, you know.
I don't anticipate that we're gonna need to use them, because if we really thought we were.
Yeah, we wouldn't enter a relationship knowing that.
That's right.
Look, there's no lock on, there's no lock on the contract, right? It's not like you're entering into a seven year agreement.
That's right.
Uh, at the end of the day, right?
And and I've been in situations where there have been legacy alternative assets brought to new OCIOs.
I deal with it.
I'm sorry?
I deal with that.
I'm sure you do, and so it's just, it's just a little messier, that's all.
And looking, you have to work around what the client already owns and what the client comes in with, and 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 you you work with that.
Uh, I had a question, um, what, so if you like, Mike's done a great job for us, what do we, do we expect the performance is going to tick up even more now that we have more flexibility in it with something like this? I know you can't go, you don't know if the future is gonna hold, but has the OCIO typically outperformed people not the OCIO?
Yeah, I mean, so like, Brad, I I would look at it this way, it's me and my team or it's me and my new team. I mean, I would take the me and my new team. And with the, with the, really, it's this, it's, I think, having discretion, you would say we should have better performance, I mean.
So wouldn't that the first ones to approach this method?
No.
So in in your history, how's it happened with other firms or other towns? How did it work out?
Yeah, but it's been a home run.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, really, the three thirty eight relationship has been how long has three thirty eight been around? I feel like it's, because I started thirty years ago, there won't three twenty one and three thirty maybe fifteen years.
Been OCIO since nineteen ninety three.
Really? Okay, yeah.
Okay, so it it OCIO has been around for a long time.
Uh, it's. Committees love it, business owners love it, controllers, CFOs, because it's a true outsourcing and it's it's a measurable business. If we lay an egg, fire us, right? I mean, just like you could have.
Because if you have that situation with the OCIO, we can't get out that quickly, right?
You can get out.
You're confusing alternative investments with OCIO.
We can fire the OCIO tomorrow, just the way we can fire Mark, Mike and his group tomorrow. Um, that's, that's not the issue, it's only if we're at some of these illiquid alternatives that takes longer to get out of.
Yeah, the the relationship ends, the money is tied up.
The notice gates, right? So that if, uh, it's the, it's actually above the illiquidity premium in that private, private investments can truly invest for the long haul, because they're not you know, Joe the plumber isn't calling in a panic to sell every Tuesday and sell, you know, blah, blah, blah. And so that illiquidity premium allows these investments to think longer term. And this, a benefit is when they throw up the gates, because if they start hemorrhaging assets, right? It can all of a sudden very quickly turn into an illiquid until the, until the storm is over. That's a good thing. And so, um, you know, i- i- if you think in those terms, and, you know, we're still talking you know, a small percentage of the overhaul asset allocation.
You're probably talking not more than ten percent.
It depends on the type of investment you serve you. Typically, the funds, the firm, the funds that I've been involved with that benchmark their private equity components expected to add value versus public stocks, for example, over a long period of time um, of probably two to three hundred basis points. Um, you know, so, so if you would say, if you benchmark your public stocks against the S and P five hundred, then you would expect your private equity over a long period of time to do S and P plus.
And you've you've probably heard this, because this is kind of the most common thing that's, is the Yale and the Harvard endowment is eighty percent.
Yeah.
But it also tends to spread out the, uh, uh, fluctuation. So it smoothes out your volatility and 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 it does tend to increase your longer term performance.
So right now we have one IPS for the town and the police plan, correct?
Yep.
So in theory, but we should, because one's been closed for eight years, we probably should have two anyway.
Yep.
Or at least one that details out that the difference is between the two.
Yeah, probably one with the detailing. But all the other stuff.
Again, two thousand twenty five vintage, think think in those terms, a fresh start with the IPS. Nothing wrong with the one you have, it's twenty five years old and it's been people have taken stuff. The the history of IPS twenty five years ago, it was only five star rated, only this, it was very specific and it was the the, the old IPSs were constantly in violation. And then it moved to sort of general and, you know, I've I've watched the the history of IPSs and you know, now, what's what's your typical, how many pages is your typical IPS that you see in government? Yeah, you know, they 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 used to be much bigger than that.
The state of Connecticut is in the process of revising theirs and they're getting it down to a hundred and twenty.
Oh, Jesus. Yeah, wow, wow.
Even if the board decided not to go with the ICIO, either way, the IPS needs to be updated.
Yes, that's right. We probably ought to have an executive session, right, to just talk about the decision.
I don't think you can, because it's not on the agenda.
Oh.
You can't go into executive room, right, Mary?
Yeah, we have to.
But we can have, we have to have a special meeting.
A special meeting we could call anytime.
Yeah. It just has to be forty.
I'm just thinking about process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We should make this decision after.
But we could actually have a meeting before the end of the month if you want it. We could schedule one for next week or the week after. And we just, we just can't do it now.
Yeah.
As you said, forty eight hours.
Yeah, or twenty-four, forty-eight hours is if it's Google Meet is virtual, it's twenty-four if it's just in person. But because we have two members that usually show they're not here today that are virtual, let's just back on doing it forty-eight hours in advance.
Yeah.
And Mary likes more notice.
Friday afternoon.
But I mean, if you want, we could, we could have a meeting next week, like next Wednesday if we want. You know. And then we could delve into this and get a, get a call.
Yep. Yeah, I don't think we should wait until our next.
No, no, that makes no sense. The next meeting is one in April.
Yeah, yes.
This is the uh, contract, which I think would be helpful in your decision.
Myra, you want to hit in this together? Yeah, we got an extra for. You know, always a day.
Yeah, so I started reading through this, but I have to admit I don't.
Yeah, I looked at it. I did not read.
Yes, Myra, exactly, yes.
Yeah, all contracts review, but.
Yeah. Yep. That, that's not Marty or is it Marty?
No, it's uh, her name is Melanie O'Brien.
Is Marty uh, how's he doing?
Yeah.
Marty's, Marty's around?
Yeah, he's still around. It's um.
You're still practicing?
First selection. They usually. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I know. Just wondering if you're still in town, still.
Yeah, yeah, he's still.
Honestly, he's still around.
Yeah. He's still with us. He's just not with us.
Good, 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 good.
Um, I can't do next Wednesday because I have the state of Connecticut.
Well, we could do Thursday or Friday. What, what do you prefer, Thursday or Friday?
I'm fine.
Bob, what do you want for you? Either Thursday or Friday.
Of next week.
Of next week.
Um, definitely Thursday, not Friday.
Thursday would be.
We're going down to Pennsylvania.
Could we do one o'clock Thursday?
So one, I canceled the police budget meeting today that I had at one o'clock today because we didn't know yet this. We moved it to next Thursday at one o'clock.
Well, how long does that take? Do we want to do it after?
So I'm available before that.
Before?
So noon would be the latest I could do on Thursday.
Okay.
But it's exactly, technically I don't need to be there because I don't think a voter.
You should be there.
Should be there, yeah.
Yeah.
So you want to do eleven o'clock then?
Yeah, eleven o'clock would be fine. Eleven o'clock next Thursday.
Mary, does that work?
So happy.
Can we do that, Mary?
The real boss.
Could it be any earlier? Could it be ten?
No, we could. Well, whatever we'd be able to do at a ten.
I can do it.
Okay, ten.
You will be at five.
Twenty-third.
That's the uh, uh, one twenty-three, twenty-five. Okay, ten AM executive session.
Is that the only thing that's going to be on it?
Yeah, well, you need, you need to put on there uh, expected and um, in here you should put on there uh, whatever we need for language for if they decide to initiate a contract with the OCIO. Because you need what the topic is. You can't just say a meeting.
Consideration of, of utilizing announcers to achieve the best with.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because you can't just have a meeting that says, we're going to meet and we're not going to tell you what we're going to talk about, what we're going to do it in private.
No, 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 you, that's a violation of. Well, at the same time, then we're going to be also talking about the revision or the redoing of the statement of investment policy.
But I think the first step would be to, well, the first step is to decide to design a OCIO.
Okay, so that's the first thing. Then they'll work on that. That's the second.
Because ideally, they would bring a lot of ideas to us of what.
Yeah, we would have the framework and really kind of get the thing going with your input.
So really, the executive session is going to be to, if we're working on approving this. And then.
OCIO.
The old, yeah, the OCIO. All right. So all in favor?
I. Uh, you actually don't need to vote on that.
We don't.
You're the chairman, you get to set meetings.
Oh, okay. So we don't need a vote. Okay. So as the chairman, I set the meeting then, uh, ten AM next Thursday, uh, executive session. And the purpose is uh, sort of consideration of the uh, OCIO. All right. And that's what the purpose of it is for. All righty.
All right. And Mike, you're still going to go through our performance then, right?
Yeah, so I'll be brief in the interest of time, um, but uh, talk about the two thousand twenty-four performance and uh, but going to start with the Morgan Stanley view of two thousand twenty-five and um, just a couple of com- comments, you know, valuations are high. Uh, expectations we think are a little bit rosy. Um, there's lots of noise of significant policy changes. I don't think I need to talk about the tariffs and all the, you know, everyone is kind of just scratching their head of, of what's coming. Um, we think Morgan Stanley's view is the S and P's five hundred earnings are going to struggle uh, to surpass these ambitious forecasts. Um, we do think we're going to have or, you know, continue to have a soft landing. Um, perhaps two to three rate cuts in two thousand twenty-five is consensus. Inflation, we had great inflation number uh, this morning, which sent the futures, I don't know where we are, but uh, we're up seven hundred on the S and P when I left, uh, which was good to see because I, I don't know how close you guys follow the bond market, but since, you know,
I'm marketing it back.
Well, your, your whole life, you're taught of the inverse relationship with interest rates and, and bond values. And, you know, what's been awkward to watch is a hundred basis point cut in rates and bond values go down. And that's what's happened since September.
Twenty years we've gone up.
You, 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 you've seen stock and bonds correlation be positive, which you know, all that, all that with the S and P five hundred trading twenty-two times uh, twenty-five estimates. Um, so certainly it's going to be, you know, could be a, a, a challenging year. Um, so start with the town plan and, you know, we don't need to spend a lot of time on the asset allocation. Uh, you guys know as money goes in and money goes out, there is a uh, within this platform, we're constantly reallocating the underlying investment slots. We can land here on page eight. And uh, you know, the performance for the plan uh, in two thousand twenty-four was nine point eight four percent. You know, down from where we thought we were headed, you know, at the last meeting. Uh, it's a dollar gain of three point five million. Uh, annualized rate of return in the last five years, six point six two, twelve basis points over the bench, over the goal. Uh, but there you see the, you know, the reality of this plan that four point seven million more uh, had come out than went in. Uh, going back to two thousand nineteen, we're annualizing at uh, six point nine one. That's, you know, that includes, the second worst year of my career was two thousand twenty-two. I always try to remind myself that, that, you know, oh, eight, S and P down fifty-one, but the ag was upping. Right? So there was the inverse relationship with stocks and bonds. Two thousand twenty-two, you know, S and P down twenty-two and the ag down twelve, worst year in the history of the bond market. Um, you know, I, we, we, I always break my arm, pat myself on the back with how short in duration and, and the worst year of the history of the bond market down twelve, we were down, you know, a little less than four because we were, we were short in duration and high in quality. Um, manager performance, nothing's really changed from the last meeting. Um, you know, we have growth managers, our active managers are underweight mega cap, are underweight technology and underweight the meg seven and uh, you can see that our large cap growth manager in, in two thousand twenty-four uh, got beat by the benchmark bike. And we, we see that often, uh, you know, in, when you have forty percent of the S and P performance by seven, it's that concentrated that if you're not, you're not knee-deep in tech, uh, you're underperformed. Uh, Lance Bernstein continued to, you know, big time underperform. And you might remember from the last meeting, they have quality stocks, quality earnings, and, you know, they tend to outperform um, in, in a totally different type of environment. Our value manager outperformed, uh, continued to outperform, um, mid-cap, that's a passive anchor. Uh, the mid-cap manager again, underperformed and that guy Bill Rice, you know, similar story is that in the, in the high, you know, growthy type markets, he, you know, always tends to uh, underperform. Obviously, the Vanguard Total Stock Market Index did, did its job. Um, the Fuller Thaler, the, the beho- the behavioral guy, man, fascinating when you read about how they pick stocks, but he uh, he continues to significantly outperform. Um, and when you read about the whole behavioral sort of pattern and how they, they pick stocks, it's, it's pretty fascinating to read about. International managers did well, um, you know, Causeway outperformed by almost five hundred basis points. Harding Lovner, who he's got, you know, their uh, you know, sense inception numbers beat, but uh, you know, slightly un- underperformed for the year. Uh, BlackRock, which is our short-term taxable fixed income manager, slightly beat. Uh, Sage, which you might remember from the last meeting, he buys some fixed income outside of the benchmark, so um, you know, that has been a little bit of a disappointment, but understanding what he owns uh, sort of explains the story. Um, you know, REITs, which the last meeting, the twelve-month return was up, I think thirty percent. You can see where REITs have done uh, year-to-date and these, all our alternative investments are indexed. Uh, so with, you know, just the, the Vanguard REIT index and then the Alarian MLP, we were talking about MLPs, Kevin and I were before the room, and boy, those things have been on a tier uh, since, since two thousand nineteen, annualizing, you know, fifteen point three five percent. Um, so, you know, that's kind of where we are from a performance standpoint.
Mike, could you talk about Sage a little bit more? You said he's buying stocks outside of the benchmark.
Yeah, so at the last meeting, we talked about it is, you know, his, um, he can buy bonds that are a little bit lower in quality and a little bit longer in duration. And so if you, in the research, I think I brought it to the last meeting, it's very common to see Sage have consistent either higher rate of return or underrated return because it really isn't a custom benchmark built for him. Uh, Sage, I don't know, Kevin, how much you know about it? He is a focus manager, which is, you know, the Morgan Stanley's Global Investor Committee's highest uh, consideration for outperformance uh, in the short term, in, in, in the next seven years. Um, so if you look at what he owns, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's just a, a different flavor than the benchmark. So you, you tend to see kind of the, the, the wide either outperformance or underperformance. Um, you know, if we do move forward with the OCIO, you know, it's the, the work begins and I'm guessing that uh, the obvious managers are going to be the first to go, um, which we've been patient, right?
Well, I just, I mean, what I'm just wondering with Sage is, um, given that there are only sort of straight fixed income manager, do we want a quirky straight? You know, what, what is the purpose of fixed income in our portfolio and is it primarily?
Well, it's not the only fixed income manager. It's the only.
Well, I mean, the others short.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
I view, I view that as a little bit more than cash and.
Yep.
You know, so this is the sort of anchor to inward bond manager for us.
Yep.
And I, I, I don't know enough about them to, to opine one way or the other. I just think it's worth looking at whether we want something more plain vanilla in that role.
Sure.
Want.
And adding.
Clearly, they're cons- they're consciously trying to add value versus their benchmark. Um, and they have a lot of tracking error versus benchmark, which is what you're saying. I just, I just don't know if that's the best way for for this piece. And it's twenty percent of portfolios.
Right. Well, and, you know, through the last twenty-four years, Myra, I mean, you sort of hit the nail on the head in the last meetings, I've sort of become the OCIO. Right. So I've had the turnover and the trustfulness and, and, and uh, I, I don't disagree that adding other fixed income managers to complement Sage makes a lot of sense. So.
Yes, I don't have a manager. I don't have, I don't lack faith in them. I
Yeah.
You know, that you've done a good analysis there. I just.
But I rely on the Global Investment Committee, really. I mean, I mean, I read the research and I read the, the, you know, the techniques of, of, of how they're supposedly, and, you know, what, what brought my attention to them again is uh, if you screen by focus managers, they were the, they were the biggest recommendation by far. And so I, I default to that, to the sixty-five analysts, um, in that. Um, police plan, same story, same allocation. So we can kind of wrap it up there is, I would say this, it uh, you know, twenty twenty-four was a good year, right? Fingers and toes crossed that Brad, when he has his Happy New Year in, in June, that uh, we again ha- have a, a higher rate of return because it certainly takes the steam out of, you know, the, 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 the taxpayer who may or may not pay attention to this stuff, but it uh, you know, fingers and toes crossed that the next six months look like the last six and we'll be there and you know, if you think about, we had one year, I think in the last eight, one year of underperformance relative, you know, six and a half, it, it, we tend, we tend to have gotten lucky or good, or a combination of both. Um.
There might have been two, but one was like, we had like a twenty-two year.
Right.
Like, so I think the next year was like a minus nine and then.
Well, in our actuary, we, we do smoothing, right? So in the big years, we're, we're putting that in the bag to offset.
Yeah, our like five-year average is above six and a half.
Yep, right.
Which is what I look at more as be riding away with it.
Right.
As long as you're consistently above it.
And we're hitting our actuarial. So, guess I teach.
That's it.
Okay, very good. Now, last thing on the air is controller updates.
Um, so I am, we talked a lot about the uh, pension side, we talked about the insurance.
Right.
The.
So liability.
Health insurance piece. I, I, I know you guys are more the workers' comp liabilities, but health insurance wise, we're still in the uh, state plan for health insurance. Uh, they're talking nine to eleven percent increase. Um, their next update's next week, so we'll see what that does. Um, I reached out to Kerma, who does our workers' comp and lapse, um, and they're supposed to get me, he said either the end of the month or the next month, so I said, hopefully the end of the month, they're supposed to get us updated numbers. Um, knock on wood, we've got really good claim history, I'm up to it, so. Um, so we hope that we continue to get good uh, renewal rates with us. I think our, our lap is capped at five. Uh, liability auto and property.
Right.
Um, if you remember, we were into the last year for twenty-five, was supposed to be the last year of our old agreement for the liability auto and property. Um, and they could have increased us three percent. At the time they offered us as, and they did, they were going to increase us three percent. At the time they offered us a zero uh, with a three-year renewal, but it's a zero, a five and a five. Um, so we took that. So we took the zero upfront because we have been getting three-year agreements with three threes in it. Um, so a three-year agreement with, in essence, ten over three years, we took that. I did reach, reach out to Paul at the time to see what he's seeing, and he goes, most of my clients would jump at a five percent increase this first year, let alone a zero, and then be capped at Trump. Um, so hopefully they don't come back at the five for it, and we're below that, but they do have the ability to go up to five. And workers' comp goes year to year, so that's very great.
And we've had a pretty good record before the comp, I think.
Yeah, the last uh, it's gone down more years lately than up because it'd be bad good claim years, but all it takes is one bad claim on comp.
Yeah, and there isn't too much competition in that area.
No, there's, last time we went out, I think when uh, Bob switched us to Kerma. Um, on the comp side, Travelers, who wasn't a carrier, wanted a thirty-five percent increase for one year and wouldn't guarantee it. And then I think we went out and we got Travelers, quotas again, Kerma and the other person in the field did not. So.
That's it.
It was Kerma. And it's worked well for us. So we have a good relationship with them, so.
Yeah, and it hasn't opened up, that field hasn't opened up. It's still very tight.
Yeah. So probably in part because I think Kerma has like at least one of the two, like a hundred and fifty of the hundred and sixty-nine towns. So like, it's not like somebody's coming in and stealing them, but I don't think anybody's looking to steal. So like, it's not like somebody's coming in and stealing them, but I don't think anybody's looking to steal them either. So. So.
No, we just got to, we just got to keep our, our record, uh, clean.
Yeah. So. That's all I got for my controllers update.
All righty. I guess, uh, that's going to do it. Um, I make a motion to adjourn. Bone paper.
Aye.
Will be it.
Thank you.
And then we got our meeting set for, uh, next week.
Great.